How long does he want us to wait?
Late, late. Hi, John.
Hi, Chris. I mean, Ken, sorry. I'm looking at Chris's picture and talking to you.
We, uh, we, we're having, uh, he had IT up here and it's, it's not an US problem. It apparently is a, a YouTube problem. No worries though, the, the meeting, both this meeting as well as, uh, council meeting has been posted publicly. And on radio and everywhere else. So people are more than welcome to join in. So it is a, a public meeting. Just disappointing because I wanted it on the YouTube channel. Anyways, that being said, there's going to be a lot of extra people, probably in here as well as for the, uh, council meeting. So everyone that can hear me, I, I hope, I hope we can follow the rules and please keep yourself on mute, everybody, um, until you're called upon by, uh, Ms. Hefford to speak. Otherwise it'll just be way too confusing for everyone. And, uh, we want to keep this meeting rolling smoothly. So again, I apologize for the minor technical delay, but, but we did have a contingency plan. So we can move forward now and don't mean to hijack your meeting, John. So.
No, no. Are we ready to start then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'd like to call the, uh, laws, rules and ordinance committee to order. Welcome, everybody that's here. Let me give you a little bit of, of background of, of how we got to this place and, and why we're here. But first, the members of the LRO committee are, I'm the chairman. I'm John Elder, Council at Large. Chris, Councilman Chris Leibold, um, Councilman for the fourth ward, Councilman Jim Slick, for the second ward and Christine Weiss, Council at Large. Okay? Um, just some background information. This process started about a month ago when Councilman Leibold and I met with Mayor Sanchez, Safety Service Director Frost, um, Downtown Business Association Director Christie Builder, and Chief of Police, um, Dean Bliss. And we discussed instituting a DORA for the city of Fremont. And DORA is the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. And if you want to know a little bit more about it, um, I would certainly ask you to do a Google search for DORA. And you can find the Ohio Ordinance explaining all the specifics about the DORA on that website. It's very detailed. And just, we, we met to discuss what we'd like to propose for Fremont as our designated outdoor refreshment area. Okay? And we're using this meeting as a public forum to discuss, find out what you think, that we would like to do. To tell you from the start, I'm in very much in favor of having a DORA for the city of Fremont. How that looks, the hours that employs, I am not set in stone about what I believe. Okay? So this is an informational meeting. And I would like Councilman Leibold and, and Bob Gross, who was, I apologize, Bob, I skipped you. He was at the meeting. He's done a lot of legwork for this. They're more than welcome to chime in to explain at any point that I missed anything or that needs to be explained. Okay? But, um, the state of Ohio allows for cities to implement a DORA. And there kind of is a two level effort. Since we're a municipality with under 35,000 people, our DORA is limited compared to what Toledo has, for example. Okay? We are allowed to have a designated outdoor refreshment area of 150 acres maximum. And that area must be contiguous. It must be connected. It must include at least four venues that have a liquor license. Okay? This area would be marked off with designated signs to let you know where you've reached the end of the DORA. It also has signs designated which businesses within the DORA, um, allow for DORA to be used or not used. Okay? So, um, we were, Councilman Leibold and I were at a downtown business association meeting this morning and I gave an example, for example, this isn't set in stone, but for example, if you went to Taco Tuesday at the VFW and they were a DORA establishment. And after dinner, you wanted to head over to the garrison for, for the refreshments. Okay? You could purchase a DORA cup from the VFW. And then you could proceed over the garrison. Now, the rules state that the DORA cup must be clear plastic. And there's discussion about what's on the cup. Somewhere on the cup, there must be the rules of DORA placed on it. Okay? And so you would head over to the garrison with your beverage and, um, before you could go into the garrison, you had to finish your beverage. And there will be a sanitation bin for you to place your empty DORA container as you enter the garrison. And if you want to go to a further DORA establishment after the garrison, you can purchase another drink at the garrison and proceed on to your next destination. Okay? So that's kind of the rough outline of what a DORA would be. All right? Some things we have found out, thanks to Bob and Chief Bliss, um, is that many establish, you know, how the, you know, many establishments in the DORA can either opt in or opt out. Okay? They have the opportunity to do that. All right? Chief Bliss called the area, um, municipalities to their law enforcement, asking what problems they've had with the DORA. And he reported they've had none, which is, I think, an encouraging prospect for us to implement it. So that's kind of what, in a rough estimate, what a DORA is. Councilman Leibold, did I, did I miss anything?
Um, I think one thing that you missed, that you missed, um, is that if you purchase a DORA cup, as long as, if you're going into, say, another retail salesman downtown that is DORA friendly, I believe you can take that cup in there with you. You just can't take it into another alcohol establishment.
Okay.
Okay? And I also was able to, yeah, pick up an example cup, um, from Tiffin. And so you, you can see it's clear plastic. It has the DORA Tiffin logo on this side. The back, this one was available at Reno's and then it posts the rules right there, which designate the hours and, um, that, you know, it's supposed to stay within the boundaries, et cetera.
So what we would like to do for the city of Fremont, we would like to have a DORA. Now, what that includes, the acreage, the hours, that is not anything set in stone. It's for discussion. And, um, there's other things and Councilman Leibold is a little bit better at it than I am. If, can you explain the, the plan, the proposal in that process?
Um, yeah. Uh, so in order to start the DORA process, it needs to be an application that is basically submitted to us, the city council. Bob Gross and others in the administration are, have a draft application or are drafting an application. And we're taking feedback from this meeting as well as feedback that we're taking online as to how we shape that in terms of the hours and the location. Um, and those sort of question marks. Um, after that application is submitted, there's a hard 30 days before we can pass it. So because that application has not yet been submitted, we're looking at at least 30 days before we can pass this, um, into law in the city of Fremont. Uh, then after passing, uh, there's some sort of review committee, uh, that can, that can periodically review establishments in the DORA. So that if there are problems associated with a DORA establishment, um, essentially they can kick themselves, we can get them kicked out of the DORA, um, for misbehavior or whatever problems develop. So there's a constant review of establishments and of the, of the geography of the DORA throughout its life.
Mr. Gross, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, I've got a few things to add. Just to rewind, I mean, I think, uh, state legislation, uh, DORA was created in 15. You started to see communities pass their Doras in 17. And just a quick rundown on communities in and around us that, that have a DORA, uh, Toledo, Napoleon, Defiance, Tiffin, Fort Clinton. Those are just a couple of the quick five that, uh, I'm referencing. I know there's, there's more. You know, and those are the five, because those are the five. We've kind of researched and spoken to the folks, uh, in those communities. So ideally in real simple terms, it's kind of a to-go cup. And the thought is if there are other leisure activities as you leave an establishment, uh, a concert, if you're in some type of entertainment district, a car show, um, some other venue, you, you can have that as you leave the establishment. So it really is kind of a, a to-go cup. What we've learned is every community is a little bit different. Some communities choose to make their Doras as big as possible. Some of them restrict, restrict them, uh, to a smaller area. Some of the Doras, um, one thing to, I think that's important to know that city council is able to change or amend the DORA every 12 months. So it could be implemented and if it's successful, some other, other changes could be made. If there are issues, you know, you know, changes can be made according to whatever issues you face that may correct those issues. So what we did starting last Friday, uh, and an email was sent to all the members of council. A survey monkey was sent out to the public and it ran for a week. We shut it down this afternoon at three o'clock. And there were three basic questions and I'll go through the results of those. Question one is, do you support a designated outdoor refreshment area in Fremont? 385 people took the survey. For question one, uh, 80% said yes, 20% said no. Uh, so it seems as though the vast majority, the citizens in Fremont support the DORA. Question two, where would you?
How many responses were on the, I don't know if you said the number of?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, a total of 385. So question two, where would you like to see the designated outdoor, uh, areas, boundaries? And there were three choices, uh, the downtown, historic downtown district, the historic downtown district plus, uh, maybe some of State Street and Krogan Street to run it up the hill to the 818 and Depot and Chuds. And then the third choice would be, we called it citywide, but to stretch it out as much as acreages as were permitted. Uh, so I can break it down by votes. So historic downtown got 118 votes. Uh, historic downtown plus Krogan Street and State Street got 117 votes. And then citywide got 92 votes. So percentage wise, that breaks down to 36.09, 35.78 and 28.13. Uh, and like I said, we, we can post these results, uh, tomorrow on the city Facebook page or webpage. I know this afternoon at four o'clock, we sent an email out to all the council members. And then the last question, uh, once again, 385 people took the survey and it was real simple as far as the hour. So, um, and our, our choices were, you know, basically when does it start on the weekends? You want it to start at, at noon on Saturday or at nine AM on Saturday? And it was 2:21 to 1:07. So 67.38 versus 32.62. So. Huh?
For, for, for 11 o'clock start compared to nine?
Uh, yeah. So, yeah. So basically 67% voted in favor of starting it at noon and 32% voted in favor of starting it at nine AM. So, um, we thought that was pretty good feedback. Um, I mean, and obviously we're always welcome, open to continued feedback and, and input, uh, which is why this hearing is, is here tonight. But I definitely wanted to share those numbers with the public and, and council and open that up for discussion or questions.
Before, before you get to discussion, just to let, to let the people on board know that, that, um, 150 acres is a lot of acreage. And, and it only includes the city of Fremont. Okay? So for example, Pub 400, for example, is in the city of Fremont, but the timeout is not. Okay? And Big Shots down the street from Pub 400 is in the city of Fremont, but there's no public walking space to get there. All right? We've also, you know, we've reached out to numerous places. For example, the Hayes Presidential Center would be interested in being part of the DORA. So the issue of contiguous and acreage is also consideration for how we would like the DORA to be set up. Because like, for example, if we go to Spiegel Grove, that would entail the, the DORA including neighborhoods. Okay? And that was, that was a question and a discussion.
Excuse me, John, you were losing your audio.
Oh, okay. So.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Nah.
It, it's not very good.
Yeah.
Find your microphone.
I'm at 100%. So Chris, you want to fill in what I just said?
Yes. So.
Please.
We're allowed one DORA due to our population of 150 contiguous acres. We, um, using the, the tools on the Dust County GIS page, we could fit pretty much every liquor license in the, in the city limits. You know, save the stuff out by Walmart, um, into that 150 contiguous acres, um, basically. So we have the ability to, to go pretty thick. Okay? Um, but, um, like Spiegel Grove showed interest in being included in it. Um, but that would have to go through a significant amount of, um, you know, residential, whereas our sort of current, uh, proposal goes through some, but not that much. John, is that, is that as far as you were discussing there?
Yeah.
Um, and, and, uh, John, I have a letter here from the 818 Club. Yeah. I just want to read some of it. That sort of explains their position. Um, so of course they want to continue it all the way up to the 800 block Krogan Street at, at least. Um, and they write, uh, due to the regulations, uh, we are following because of COVID-19, we have had our indoor seating greatly reduced. To serve alcohol outside requires a roped off area adjacent to our restaurant and our limited sidewalk space does not accommodate for this. Allowing DORA in Fremont will allow us to serve alcohol outside without roping off the sidewalk. We have customers who regularly ask if they can dine outdoors, but we have to tell them they are not permitted to drink outside. So a DORA ordinance would be a benefit for us. We have seen how other communities have benefited from DORA and feel it is a good opportunity to pursue, not just for us, but for Fremont in general. Um, sincerely Greg and Deb Kohler. So I just wanted to get that out there to explain the, the position that some of our businesses are in due to COVID and do the, due to the guidelines they have to, uh, follow and that this is a, another economic lever that, that we can pull to help some of these businesses out, um, during this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think it's time we can open up to any questions, comments from those who have logged in. Can you all hear me?
Councilman Elder, are you there?
I'm there. Why can't people hear me?
I can hear you. I can hear you right now. I couldn't for a while, but I can hear you.
A number of people are muted. So.
Uh, this is Mayor Sanchez. May I say a few words?
Absolutely.
Um, first off, my video, I am in Lima. I attended my seventh grade son's first football game. So I came to the truck to get on the, the Zoom here.
Did we win?
Uh, no, we did not. Uh, it was 58-0 at halftime.
Ouch.
Uh, so, uh, what I will say is first off, I just want to thank Bob Gross, uh, Councilman Leibold and Councilman Elder. Uh, I know that there's been a lot of time and effort and, uh, hard work and, and Christie Builder in downtown Fremont, Inc. And Peggy Courtney at the Visitors Bureau and everyone else who is, has done a lot of research on this. You know, from my perspective, I think that, you know, uh, the community feedback that we're getting, obviously, the 80% of the, of the, of the feedback shows that the community wants this. We have, uh, we've taken some surveys as Mr., uh, Mr. Gross has mentioned. I will say that I've spoken to every, uh, restaurant owner in, in that proposed area, um, that Mr. Elder and Mr. Leibold briefly talked about. And, uh, I think every business is, is in support of this. Um, and, and stated that due to the tough times, obviously with COVID-19, that this would be something that they think would be advantageous. I myself think it's something that could be advantageous to the community. For, uh, you know, on part of our economic development plan on, you know, trying to retain young people in our community, giving, you know, the, the population that's here an opportunity to go out and, and have some, uh, sort of a nightlife. Now, like anything, I understand that there could be obstacles. There could be things that, you know, that could come up, you know, there's, there's some concerns that we have as far as, you know, trash and things like that, but it's something definitely that it could be challenging, but I believe it's something that we can work through as a city, uh, in collaboration with the businesses and, uh, downtown Fremont, Inc. and the Visitors Bureau.
Thank you. Anybody else? One of the things I'd like to point out that actually Mayor Sanchez pointed out is that, um, I, I have seen some comments on Facebook in regards to a DORA and in, in worries about behavior and things like that. Having a DORA does not change the laws on public intoxication, disorderly conduct and things like that. Um, and like I reiterate, Chief Bliss, um, called area municipalities that have Doras and their police chiefs, and he was told that they have virtually had no issues, um, with that side of the DORA, which I thought was very encouraging.
This Law Director Melly, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
All right. I'm also not able to be on video, just on audio, but, um, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a great idea. Um, I have been in other cities where they've had this and I've won this in Fremont. So this is a very good thing. I'm glad the survey results were taken and I'm glad that they were as positive as they were. In Tiffin, it was a little bit more controversial because they included, uh, some of the neighborhood and went by, uh, closer to multiple schools, not just one. And I understand that, uh, they're going by one of the schools, but that school's in favor. But in Tiffin, it was controversial because one of the schools was not in favor of it. So I'm glad that we're just keeping it small to start and then we can amend it later on as we, as, uh, Mr. Gross explained. That's all I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to have a chance to speak? Or ask questions?
This is Cassandra and I just have a question.
Please.
Oh, what every, um, bar or restaurant that serves alcohol within the, within the radius of the DORA, would they be eligible? Do you have to have a specific license or permission to do so?
Councilman Leibold?
Yeah, I believe you do have to have a specific type of license. I think most of the establishments we mentioned within the, uh, within the area we're talking about would qualify, but they, they can opt out. They don't have to be a DORA establishment if they don't want to. Um, I believe we also have the option to, uh, grant temporary, um, areas like a license. For example, um, you know, like St. Joe's Kevick Schools Auction, um, if they're right there in the DORA, I believe we could give them the option to be a temporary DORA on a, you know, limited time basis. So you, you know, when they have these temporary permits.
Okay. And I've heard, um, like in the context of this conversation, of this discussion rather, talking about, you know, the, due to COVID-19 and how it's affected the businesses and their, um, clientele and people being able to come and sit. With this, is this something that we're going to affect like this fall or when would that go into effect? Hold it on.
Yes. I, I mean, I'd like to see it go into effect as, you know, as quickly as we can do it, you know, and get everything up and going. Uh, but as I alluded to earlier, there's this 30 day, or 30 days hard that basically is for public comment from the day of the application until we can pass it. So, you know, just looking from 30 days till today, October 30th would be the first day that we can pass it. Okay? And then from there, there is a time period that we would have to get the sanitation plan in effect, uh, meaning essentially increasing the number of garbage cans, recycling bins within the limits. And we'd have to put the signage up to designate the area where you're at. So like if you're in Tiffin, you walk down, um, I don't know if it's Market Street, I can't remember. Market Street, Washington Street, they're both in there. You come to the end, you see the sign says this is the end of the DORA. You, you turn around and you go the other side of sidewalk or whatever. So we'd have to get those in place.
And the participating, participating establishments that sell alcohol have to get a special license from the Liquor Control Board, which takes up two weeks, up to two to three weeks to receive.
Okay. And this will be, this is going to incorporate State Street bars also?
It could. It could very well.
All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And someone out here, when do you, when will you determine what areas that we're looking into potentially doing this DORA?
Um, good question. Um, hopefully, honestly, by the next council meeting. To have a proposal and, and, and the application. It's kind of interesting is that, um, if, if you do a simple Google search, you can find a lot of information about area communities that have Doras. For example, Delaware, Ohio has their entire application online for their DORA. And what's really kind of neat about that is it, it, it shows what, what the state requires that municipalities propose. And also they give their daily hours. Now, you know, we, we could set the DORA up in a variety of ways. The hours for each day, um, some localities have a DORA from May 31st to October 1st, for example. Okay? And then don't have it for the winter months. Some have it all year round. So, you know, um, why, why I think it's, what I've noticed in my research, I, I like what the regulations allow, but there's still a lot of latitude for each individual community to set it according to their, each community's needs. Which is kind of, which is kind of nice. And that's like, like Councilman Leibold, um, was talking about like Saturday and Sunday. You know, because we, you know, we, we've had businesses ask in our recent research, you know, for example, Mr. Gross has found out that some businesses ask they're for the DORA if it starts after 5:00 PM on a weeknight, not before 5:00 PM. And of course we'll, we'll, you know, willingly comply to that. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
Have you made it? Have you made an effort to see where the county and the library stands if it goes up Krogan Street? Would they be on board with, with us potentially?
Well, we know the library really isn't, for example. Um, but Mr. Gross can explain in some of his research with other communities that have a DORA, um, you know, they're, they're a community, they're, they're businesses within a DORA that say, while we support the DORA, we don't want the DORA in our business. And we can have signage designated.
You have signs, you have signs that they could say, you don't, they could, yeah. And I, I support, I like.
Right. We, we don't, we don't want, we, you know, we don't mind DORA. We just don't want it in our establishment.
Yeah, right. And there's a, that, that's exactly right. There's a couple of things you can do. Um, that's exactly right. You could limit it to the, the summer time, the summer months. You can limit it to just weekends. You can limit the timeframes. The one thing you can do and other communities have done this, you may come across a street where maybe one side of the street has businesses and the other side of the street has, uh, maybe houses and, you know, and so uh, there's a lot of doors where it just runs down one side of the street so that there is maybe a sense of a boundary. Pam over at the library sent me an email, um, it's, you know, with some questions. And I had said, city council, I, I said, I, I, you know, maybe I overstepped my boundaries for city council, but I said, I, I believe, city council may be willing to utilize just the, the north side of the street. Cause if in fact, if that's what city council wants to run up Krogan Street, all the establishments are on the north side of Krogan Street anyway. So, um, you could kind of have a natural boundary there of being on the north side of Krogan. Uh, part of the application process that could hang this process up is, and which is why we want to kind of lead this meeting with the kind of a sense of direction is, is the boundaries and times and, and those type of things. That's a very large component uh, of this application. We call it an application, but it's, you know, it's just a giant report of you spelling out your plan in detail. And so that's kind of, and, and the boundaries and, and days and weeks of the time, but most of the boundaries is kind of the biggest hangup in the application. So if we, uh, as, if you as a council, after hearing input and sharing your opinions with one another, uh, you know, provide me with direction, I can work on the application and potentially have, potentially have the application available to you at the next council meeting in two weeks and possibly have a first reading of that ordinance. But, uh, we would need some direction before we leave, uh, tonight.
I would prefer to not have it in residential areas as possible. That's my, I think it's a, I, I could support. I, I see a lot of benefits, but to it in our community, but I would not support the Hayes, the residential area.
Well, that, that was, that was a question we had with, with the Hayes Presidential Center, you know, wanting to be part of it is it would have to go through some, a lot of residential areas and that, you know, and, and I don't think those of us who support the DORA, you know, are looking to, you know, we want to be accommodating to all parties involved. And I think you're right. I lean your way, Justin.
And I want to thank, thank you for what you've done, Councilman Elder, for bringing.
Well, thank you.
Well, I was, I was just going to chime in there that there are probably more residents, uh, downtown than there are from Front Street to the Depot. Because you're pretty dense there above, uh, Chamber Commerce and Perpetual. I mean, so there's a lot of residents right there. I mean, that's the environment they want to live in, uh, but they're right there, you know, so there is more density of residents like downtown than there are almost all the way up Krogan Street, I bet.
Any males from the public want to speak?
Councilman Elder, can I ask a question?
Please.
Okay. So, um, I am here, um, representing, um, the Smith County Prevention Partnership Coalition. And one of the goals of the Prevention Partnership Coalition is to reduce youth access and availability, especially for underage consumption. We worked really hard in the last nine years to drop that youth underage drinking rate in the county. And so, uh, I was just. And so uh I was just wondering if council would be um willing to consider putting in the ordinance that um all your liquor establishments that have the Dora permits undergo a seller, server, responsible beverage training, um, so they know proper ID checks and all of that. Um, in the last few weeks, we actually contracted with the local sheriff's department to do um compliance checks for alcohol in the convenience stores. And out of twelve establishments in Fremont, two sold underage. Um, and so our goal really is to pre- prevent and reduce underage consumption. And so we're just wondering what the safeguards are in place for that.
Um. Councilman Libel, do you want to chime in?
Um.
With your legal background?
I, how accessible is that training? I know you just said that the uh the sheriff's department is able to give it.
So the, there are lots of seller server trainings online. Um, as part of Sineski County Public Health, we're actually working to bring that program to be much more accessible and local. So we're willing to work with the city as much as possible on that. Uh, the sheriff's office doesn't do the seller server training, they just did our compliance checks for us. Um, but we could be in communication about that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't be open to it. Uh, do you have any idea what percentage of servers or establishments have servers of that training, like right now in the county or in the city? I guess in the city.
Charlotte Stonerock is also on this call. She would have that number. Um, she actually just looked at that today.
Okay.
Um, normally, the Prevention Partnership Coalition and Sineski County Public Health sends out the free training to all liquor permit holders about four times per year. The Ohio Investigative Unit does that training for us free of charge. Our last one was in November. We had very low attendance of about six people attend. And unfortunately, because of COVID, they have not been able to do in-person training. I've been working with Agent Susan Baker of Ohio Investigative Unit to try to at least maybe do a Zoom uh meeting until we can maybe get something online to offer. But like Jamie said, you can Google it and for fifteen dollars, all the employees can take a responsible beverage service seller training and show you their certificate that they did do that.
Okay, okay.
Could you send that, could you, could you send that information to Mr. Gross possibly? Bob, would that be okay?
Yes, and and Mr. Gross should be familiar with that as he does sit on the the Public Health Board of Health. So he should know what we're doing here as well.
Okay.
And.
I did send a letter out from the Prevention Partnership Coalition. Did everyone receive that?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
I didn't.
Charlotte, I was just gonna note that I I received it and I sent it out to the members of the committee, um, the LRO committee. Um, so if you missed anybody, I can, Jamie, if you missed it, I can send it.
Yeah, I didn't get one.
I was not able to send it to Jamie as I did not have her email address. It's not online.
Okay.
It should be.
Yeah, I went to the city of Fremont and everyone is there but Jamie's.
Oh, nice.
Your phone number is there, Councilman Hafford, but Councilman Hafford, but your email is not.
Well, I'll have to make a point to get that on there.
Cassandra, did you want to say something?
I was just, I'm wanting to ask Charlotte or Jamie and maybe even the council, the council, if, when the employees, the establishment has a turnover in employees, will the new employees then be required for training and how often will the training have to be refresh, refresher training?
The ideal would it be for every new employee to take this if they're selling or serving the alcohol so they know what the laws and requirements are? Um, the training is good for two years and then there's a, there's a recommended refresher training.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Elder, I know Ralph Stern has commented that, he has commented.
Yes.
Uh, so uh, this is Ralph Stern and uh I I live at one eighteen North Monroe across, across from the depot. Are you hearing me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so um I I appreciate you guys having the meeting and um I I too was one of the three hundred and eighty-five that uh did the survey. Um, and and while I think it was Mayor Sanchez that mentioned the the number of people, I I really don't think three hundred and eighty-five is is really a large number for Fremont residents, but it is what it is and I understand that. Um, I was one of them that I I too, I'll tell you right up front, I support this, okay? But I do, and I shared the uh Councilman Libel and I've had some conversations and and I appreciate his time for that. My concerns are um the hours. Um, and 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 the reason that that's a concern of mine is is because of the involvement in residential area. So just uh from my perspective, at the depot, there's no sidewalks on that east side of the street of North Monroe. Uh, so again, does that mean they're gonna have to come up the west side, on my side, the residential side of the street? Um, I, you know, the concern I have about that is I think most people will probably be okay, but um, you know, we have a couple grandchildren that like to be here and our situation is they're able to go up our driveway and down the neighbor's driveway, kind of like a loop thing. And I don't know, you know, it's it's, that's just something that came to mind when I first read this. But um I've done some research as well. Uh, I've been doing some, looking at some other things and and uh, um, again, I don't know, and I talked with Councilman Libel, I, you know, I, there's a lot of questions there. Where do these things, where do these rules, if you will, come come into play? When will they be made? And is it possible that you, we can keep the Dora on the, on the depot side of Monroe Street? I hear that it's possible, but then again, there's no sidewalk, so there's no access. I kind of heard that was another piece that was brought up. Um, so ag- again, I'll go back to the hours because of it is residential. I I I I think uh, and I was kind of confused a little bit by the two options on the survey, but um I'm seeing, and I saw where it was Monday through Friday, five to eleven. Um, again, I didn't do as much research as you guys probably have, but I I'm wondering how many establishments downtown are open at eleven o'clock at night. Um, and I don't need an answer now, but I was, I was thinking of cutting it back to ten o'clock, again, because of residential area. Um, and and again, I'll keep the depot in mind because they're our neighbor, they're good people, they're good owners, I should say. So they respect the 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 neighborhood, the residents, um, and so I don't really have any problem with them. Uh, but I'm looking at more like the Saturday and Sunday. Um, and I heard the eleven o'clock, that and that's okay too. For me, I would, I was thinking more noon uh because of game time, but I I get the whole game times at noon thing, so maybe eleven. But uh, what I'd like to say is I think on, I think again, on Saturday night, it should end at ten o'clock. Um, I think we're just opening ourselves and in in the police department up for more issues. Um, and I think Sunday, um, I I really think, and I get that there's late Sunday night games eventually in football if we have those and, but I think eight o'clock, it would be more than a fair amount of time, again, thinking of residential areas. That's, that's uh where I'm at with that. Um, I think that's, I think that's all I had.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Councilman Elder, we can't hear you again.
I have a question. Everybody hear me?
Danny, Council Elderman, Elder said, go ahead.
Okay, I don't know why I can't hear it. Um, once we apply for this, can we change the times as we go along? Say if bars open up, uh, back to their normal time? I'm just curious uh how much we can work within this or is it take new application or what?
Well, well, Danny, there's the app, there there's the application that starts the clock. Council doesn't do the application. We we take the application and turn it into an ordinance. And so after the application is made, I don't see, I mean, I deferred to the law director on it, but it, you know, we can take, once council gets the application, we can say, nah, not eleven o'clock, ten o'clock initially. And then after that, I believe it's that review, review, it has to be reviewed annually.
Yeah, so the Dora expires after five years, so you would have to renew it every five years, but you could amend it every year, so once every twelve months approximately. So you, you potentially could start off, and I'm just throwing ideas on that, you know, you could potentially start off small with limited hours, see how that goes. And if council wishes to make any changes after twelve months, to make it bigger or extend the hours, you you can do that. I mean, there's, uh, I've spoken to communities that have it both ways. Their their Dora area is pretty big or their Dora area is confined to downtown. Uh, their Dora area is limited to the weekends or their Dora areas, you know, it's kind of maximized to the days and weeks and times that are available. So uh, that's, you know, as really myself and and Nikki Linder, the secretary up here, as we prepare this application and put the details into it, we could put a number in there based on feedback we're hearing, submit that application to council and as we review that application, uh, I mean, you could amend the application at the, you know, maybe at the first or second reading as more information comes in.
Well, Bob, what I'm getting at is if, let's say, and I, no offense to the uh the residents, but can we have it where it is till, because what I actually see is the younger people are gonna be the ones uh taking advantage of this. And if things return to normal, can, could we go to like uh a later time, but yet in our city, our city council, we can restrict the time and then just do an ordinance to extend it?
No, it's, the way I understand it, once you have the application, you you basically have to wait twelve months. Like it can't come back to council every couple months if we think it needs a change. Like it's gotta kind of, kind of have some, and I think the thought is it's got to have some stability to it so that everybody um is used to the Dora, the area, the timeframes, and and so that you're not amending it every other month. You let it play out for a period of time. And then if you amend it, you can make multiple changes in one amendment. So if we choose to amend it, we could make, you know, council could vote to, hey, maybe extend the hours and expand the area. So that would be two changes in one amendment to the ordinance.
And quick question. And if there's a business that is maybe not behaving well or we're having issues, we can address that and make a change if we need to, correct?
Correct, so that that's a great question. So what we had talked about earlier is the Laws, Rules and Ordinance Committee act as the Dora Review Committee. Uh, public can take complaints to them. The LRO can take a formal recommendation to council. So for example, if you have an establishment that there are issues of them abiding by the Dora and not managing uh or doing their part to to manage their share of the Dora, uh, you, council has the opportunity to vote and revoke their status in the Dora. And they, they would lose, they could lose their, could, you know, lose their status in the Dora. Yet another great question there, there's another point I was gonna make, I done, done forgot, but uh, well, oh, I know, I was gonna say, so what we have found in speaking to other communities that the establishments have found this to really, a really help to them, uh especially during twenty twenty during COVID. And they are very protective of their own reputations and they are very protective of their own status in the Dora and know that the public's watching. And they do a uh a really good job speaking to kind of the Economic Development Director and Defiance, Defiance, uh their establishments uh kind of govern themselves and and, you know, a combination of other things, you know, that there are little to, little to few issues, you know? I think um it was referenced earlier on October seventeenth and I, and I have the letter in front of me, uh, I'll just kind of surmise it. Chief Bliss contacted Port Clinton, Defiance, Perrysburg and Tiffin. And at the time he called them, they were on the first reading of their Dora, but Defiance, Tiffin and Port Clinton had reported from their police chiefs uh that they had their reservations and concerns and it has been executed and gone extremely smooth, uh much better than they had anticipated. Um, so that's, um, you know, so that's encouraging.
This law director, Melly, can everybody hear me? Yes. So basically, what we'll do is when we pass something, uh, it gives us a chance to look at it later and see what what was not right, what wasn't, was, what didn't work and things like that. It's just the initial getting it done and then modifying it later. As Mr. Gross was explaining, you can do it every twelve months. That's why, so that you can tweak things and and make it work. Um, but I think what we need to do when we're getting it right here the first time is try to get it as established as we want, so we just have to tweak it as opposed to like a complete overhaul.
John, I saw your lips move, which I'm assuming you're talking, but I I can't hear you, I don't know if anybody.
I can't hear, I can't hear him either.
Little bit, you speak loud.
I don't know why, my volume is up all the way.
It seems like when you lean in, we hear it a little bit better.
I'll lean in then, you can see my big ugly face. Um, any other public comments? Because it is now, what? Seven twenty-one, we have council at seven thirty? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question. Is this everything based off of the survey that you've done over the three hundred and so people, or is that gonna be something that's extended to more of the community? Or?
Well, Cassandra, I, I think that the survey is closed. There's no reason we couldn't open it back up if we really wanted to, but there is this at least thirty days of public comment to shape this, to shape this. So, you know, basically, I think we're welcoming, you know, ideas, suggestions, you know, critical thoughts um in that time period, uh because we can't pass it in, in at least, for at least thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
If no other comments, I would say our meeting is done unless anybody else has anything else to say. I appreciate all your comments, people. Thank you for all your input. I appreciate Nikki Linder for all the hard work she's put into all this and Mr. Gross for um also doing all the, a lot of work and background checks. So um, public, feel free to contact any of us on the LRO. If you have any questions, comments, ideas, we'd be happy to uh um work with it. Anybody else like to make any comments? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start the council meeting at seven thirty and seven twenty-three now. So we'll take a seven-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes. Chris, did you say something?
I said, thank you.
Oh. A moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Here. Here.
Elder.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Libel.
Here.
We.
Yeah.
Okay, council has a copy of the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? No, then they'll stand as they are. Council also has a copy of the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? No? Then we will uh go ahead and get started with the readings.
Third reading of a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, city council.
Good.
Second.
Who moved to adopt?
Chris and I did, Chris can do it.
Okay, Chris Libel moves to adopt and John Elder seconds. Are there any questions or comments about this? No? And I don't believe we had, we do have some public on here, don't we? Are there any questions or comments from the public on this? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Addie.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Reese? Reese?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, that's, resolution is approved.
And President?
Yes.
On this, on this resolution, each of the council members have to sign on, on one of the pages, so I will take it to you, and then you guys will have to go down to the city building to put your signatures on it.
This resolution we just read?
Yes.
Okay. Now, will Jim Sleek have to go down since he's not present at this meeting? Okay, all right. Okay, next reading.
First reading of the ordinance authorizing the safety service director to amend the position and classification plan and the employee compensation plan for non-union employees to include the position of Director of Diversity, Inclusion, and declaring an emergency.
Would anybody like to speak to this?
Madam President, this is a mirror of the, of the previous ordinance with the exception of the pay grade. I had the pay grade wrong. It was going to need to be amended. We just redid the ordinance and put it on.
And this, this is Law Director Melly. The reason that we, when we tabled the original one, now, since we modified the pay grade, I explained to a couple of council members that called me and asked me this question. We, since we put a new pay grade in, instead of bringing that one back and amending it, we just left it tabled and then created a new ordinance, and that's why there's a new ordinance.
Mr. Melly?
Yes.
What happens to the one that's tabled?
It just stays tabled. We, we put it at 90 days, but if nobody brings it back, it just stays, like indefinitely.
It never dies?
It just, I mean, we could bring it back and vote it down if we have to technically, but I, and I looked, I, I thought about that, but I don't think there's any need to do that.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know we received a, a letter from Mirsha about this. I, I don't know, is there anyone from the administration that wants to talk about it in conversations with mental health?
Do you want to read that, uh, uh, letter, Chris Leibold?
Yeah, let me, let me find it.
Well, I mean, I have it right here, but if you want to read it, somebody needs to read it.
Yeah, yeah, let me get in there. Okay, here I am. Okay. It says, "Dear Fremont City Councilmen and Councilwomen, our board has been committed to ensure quality access to behavioral health services for all people and to advocate to eliminate mental health disparities in access and care. We understand the impact of structural and systematic racism on behavioral health disparities. Thus, our board is financially committed funds to ensure that the minority population in Fremont and Sandusky County has a voice, has representation, and has a leader who will advocate on their behalf. We have tried this approach for the past years unsuccessfully. We believe that we did not have the right partner to accomplish this much-needed advocacy or the support services for the minority population in our community. With your support, we believe that the Diversity and Inclusion Director will be able to bridge the gap between the community members and our mental health agencies, between the community members and the local law enforcement agencies, between the community members, including children in the schools, and between the community members and city leaders. Through Mayor Sanchez, you have a leader who believes that all individuals must be treated with respect and full inclusion. I am proud to represent an organization that prioritized this need a few years ago. I ask you to approve the Diversity and Inclusion Director position for the city of Fremont. We hope that soon you will see the value in this position. We continue to be committed to this project, and we will continue to work diligently to obtain other funding resources to ensure a long-term sustainability for this position. Respectfully, Mirsha Hand.
Does anybody have any comments about this?
Is there a expiration date of this grant? Did he mention anything like that at all? Maybe?
An expiration date of the grant?
Yes.
I, I could answer the question. City Council President Hefford.
Okay.
As I explained at the beginning of this process, grants, this grant is on an annual basis. We still have approximately $25,000 to $30,000 from the previous fiscal year for the Mama's House program that we were utilizing that we weren't able to continue because of COVID-19. The board has agreed to allow us to keep those dollars if we were able to secure and get this position voted on and passed. They have already committed the other dollars that I've previously spoke about. So this is a fiscal year. Councilman Addy, are you familiar with fiscal year grant?
Yes.
So it's a fiscal year grant, and then we would reapply.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Could I, can I make another statement?
Yes.
I just want to give an example of, there's a, there's a few county agencies that operate on specific grant-funded dollars. I used to be employed with Sandusky County TASK. That's a, that's a county agency that stands for Treatment Alternative to Street Crime, if you're not familiar with what that is. And that program has been in existence for many, many years, and that is a complete grant-funded program. And the Mental Health Board, the Sandusky Seneca Windock County Mental Health Board, is the same agency that's the pass-through agency for that grant. So there are existing programs in the county, not specifically in the city at this time, that are grant-funded, and they have been for many, many years. And I also believe that out at the Health Department, I think Charlotte Stone Rook is on the call. I don't know if she could be unmuted or not. Charlotte is, is someone that I worked with at TASK just a few years back, as we were both caseworkers, and she moved over to the Health Department. But I also believe that in her current position at the Health Department, I know she has a few years out there now, and I believe that position is also a grant-funded position.
Yes, Danny.
Charlotte, are, are you there?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Can you hear me?
I can.
I've been at the Health Department for 13 years now, coming up on 14 next month, I believe. And our Health Education Department is 100% grant-funded. We have five, five health educators currently, so I can attest to that. We bring in almost $800,000 a year in our department currently in grants for prevention of drugs and alcohol, healthy eating, obesity, and things like that.
Say, thank you, Charlotte. My, my reasoning in city council for pointing that out is, is because I don't, I don't want council to feel that the, what we're, what I'm trying to do here in the city is, is uncommon. It may be uncommon inside the city of Fremont, but it's not uncommon in government. So I just want, I just wanted to point that out. And I think with the collaboration of the schools, the county, and everyone else that, that really would, would like to get going with this, I think, you know, as some, many of you have stated, that, you know, once we get this position up and going, then I think that we will see why it's needed. That's, that's the only statement I have now, unless someone has questions for, for me.
Go ahead, Danny.
One thing I didn't see in that letter, and I'm sure there's something, or it's been thought about, it is working with the Police Department, because as we see, a lot of the racial injustice seems to be with the Police Departments individually. This, how are we going to work that in?
So, I, I can answer your question, Danny. The one thing I do want to point out is I have a, and Ken's on the call, Mr. Melly's on the line. We do have a community commission in place already currently that helps deal with issues inside. And I will tell you that I have not had any issues, specific racial complaints from the Fremont Police Department, complaints on any racial injustice from the city of Fremont Police Department. So this position, a defund the police department-type position, this is not a defund the police effort. This is a position to work in collaboration with the Police Department, with other entities inside the city, with Fremont City Schools, with Terra State Community College, as those needed, as those agencies or as the city needs the support. We don't always know where an issue's going to be and how much time needs to be spent on a specific issue. And we need someone that has the pulse on the community, that can be engaged with the community, and hopefully be proactive to work and bring people together and, and try to provide diversity training and work with the, the health school or the, the Health Department, the, the school, the counselors in the school. I'll give you an example. I had a, a young lady, I don't want to say a young lady, a, a lady who was a school guidance counselor from outside of our district, okay? She, she works, she's from Fremont, and we're working on a, a program together right now. We're trying to bring a, we're going to have a minority summit group here in Fremont soon. It hadn't really come out yet to the public. We're still working on it. She's an African-American from Fremont. She's a guidance counselor. She's working on her doctorate degree, and she's done these things in, in her city school district in Chicago, and she wants to bring some of that back here to Fremont. Just today, she asked me, why are, why don't our school guidance counselors have trauma training on dealing with underlying issues and trauma? And I said, I don't know whether they do or don't. And she said, well, they don't. And she said specifically, when you're dealing with, you know, minority students, all students, there needs to be training for trauma. And she talked about the training that, that she does in, in Chicago. And she had, she was aware of the situation of, of what we're doing here with the diversity position. She's already made some public comments about supporting this position, although she doesn't live here anymore. And this is an example of what that person could do, could work with people like, with folks like the people I'm talking about, to help bring those resources inside the schools and the city if needed, or other agencies. That's just one example, and I can give many, many more. And that's how that re, that's how that, you know, entered, entered ties with, with mental health.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend Rule Four.
I do.
You second that, Chris Leibold?
Yeah.
Okay. John Elder makes a motion to suspend Rule Four. And Chris Leibold seconds. Are there any questions about the suspension of Rule Four? No? Uh, roll call.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yeah.
Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
Move it up.
I second it.
So, moves to adopt. Angie Reese seconds. Roll call. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. No roll. I'm sorry. Is there any questions from council? Yes, Justin?
My main concern that I have stated throughout this, and it is not that I'm opposed to this, I am concerned about, if the grant goes away, can we, well, I hope we can work to keep the grant, but will you make a commitment that if we do not get the grant, that the position will not stay?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I will not make that commitment. In my opinion, this is a position that is needed inside the city and has been needed for a long time. Councilman Smith, what I will assure you on is that I will continue to always look out for outside funding resources. And I feel confident that if the grant would go away, which I don't believe that it will anytime soon, that I think that you would change your mind once you see that this position is in. And I think it would be hard for you at a later time to say that we don't need to, we, we, that we don't need this position and that we should find some type of funding opportunity or put this inside the city budget. I also want to answer a question that Councilwoman Reese asked. First off, Christine, thank you for reaching out to ask me questions in reference to this position. Thank you for doing your homework on this position and everything that you've looked into. I just want to tell you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One of the questions that you asked was how will, how will success be measured? This position will not be treated any other than, this is essentially a department head. It's an appointed, it would be an appointed position by the mayor, specifically me now, just because I'm the person in office. But any other mayor who would come in office would have the authority to bring in who they would like to be in that position. It's a non-classified position. But I would do a job evaluation. I will tell you that we worked with Clement Nelson, Mr. Frost and I, and I, I think that we have a pretty good process in place on our job, job evaluations. And this position will be measured on its success through a, a performance job evaluation. The other question is, I think I answered it. I don't know the answer to how much time this person will be spending with the schools or the city or Terra. I'm going to kind of compare this person to, to Bob Gross. His position is economic developer. I don't micromanage Bob Gross. I allow him to go out and, and work in the city and meet with the businesses and, and, and do what he's got to do to attract business to our community. We communicate daily. We work on things daily, and we ultimately set the goals, and I set the direction, but I do that with a team of people, and we have an economic development team. And I kind of look at this position the same way as that whoever selects for this position, their job is to network and collaborate with, you know, the schools, the city, and everyone, and the minority community, the business leaders, the elected leaders, the people in the community. And it's important for that person to develop, to develop relationships. That way, they have their pulse on the community, because in order to know what the, and you, I guess I'm going to get specific, but in order to meet the need, you need to know what the need is. And I understand that there's a lot of pressure on me as mayor if this was to pass, because I know there's some opposition from some members in the community. And, you know, if, if it fails, it's on me. And as a leader of the city, I feel confident that we can make this position work, and I think we will all see the results with due time.
Yes, Angie.
Yes, I'd like to make some comments on this. But first of all, I want an answer, and, and I'm sure he'll know, I just don't remember what he said, I mean, exactly how he said it. But Mayor Sanchez, you said that you'd been in the TASK force, and that was a grant, a grant that that was financed with. So, that TASK force has been having a grant for all these years. I don't know how many years the TASK force has been in effect, but all those years, they've had a grant all the time?
Yes, it's, it's an actual county agency. It's Sandusky County TASK, T-A-S-C. It stands for Treatment Alternative to Street Crime. And they have two caseworkers and a director, and they do drug testing there, and they work with the court systems, the municipal court, the juvenile court, the common police court. And they basically act as case managers and provide services to people that are going through drug or alcohol rehabilitation.
Okay, thanks.
But to answer your question, yes, that program is 100% grant-funded.
Okay, now, on that, if, if 100% TASK grant-funded, that's even better news. What I was worried about was, sure, we're going to get a grant this year, but what about next year and the following years? But if, if a group like the TASK force has been grant-funded, like you said, 100%, I feel more confident now in going ahead and creating this position. I was worried about the money of it. I talked to, to City Service Director, Mr. Frost, this morning, and he explained, you know, the money and everything, and I feel very confident now. If I need, we will be able to afford it. If the money is not there, like Mr. Frost told me, if money is not there to pay for this program, then of course it will end. But I don't see where it will end because of the money.
Well, I just, I just...
Money's not going to be the reason. The money, the money is there. I don't think there's a worry anymore about finding, and that was my biggest worry, was are we going to be able to afford this program? Not, not, not the need, but the affordability of it. And I feel confident now that we will be able to afford it.
So, no, so there's a few things I'd like to add to that. So, one, I set the budget as the mayor, and I bring the budget to city council. So, if, if the, if the grant runs out, that's a decision that I have to make in my administration on what do I need to do as mayor to make this position... do as mayor to make this position stay inside the city if it is a needed position? Now, I feel confident that this will continue to be a grant funded position. But as I stated before, I can't, and as you all know, I can't make any promises that a grant isn't going to go away. And I know you don't expect me to do that. What I will tell you is I think the letter that the director, Mircha Andrew, sent, it was reassuring to me, even more so than before, that the board is fully committed, as they, as they've said. They've tried this approach many times over the last several years. And quite honestly, Councilwoman Reese, you were, you were working with me on this and on a different board that we worked on together. And you and I both saw how, saw how difficult it was to try to do it when you have someone who isn't getting paid to do this type of outreach work. It's hard to do. And I think you and I've had conversations about how difficult it is to get volunteers to really do this type of work. We have what I would describe as an excellent NAACP president who is doing what she can on outreach and, and trying to work on issues. Again, those are volunteer positions. And if we want to make real change, we need to have someone who is committed, and not only committed, but has the time and the respect of the community to get out and make an impact. Thank you.
And that, Mayor Sanchez, one of my biggest worries, because the experience that I had with that group and how, you know, what the results were, and that was my, my worry, because if the grant goes away, where are we going to come up with the money? But in looking at this and listening to everybody and reading the letter, and especially that thing about the task force has been 100% funded by grants all these years. I mean, I don't know when the task force started, but I've heard of it for a long time now. So I'm very confident now that we can go ahead and pass this and not have to worry. And we really cannot foretell the future that well. Mr. Hafford and I discussed earlier also about that. So just like everything else that we have voted on, we pass things where we're spending money and where we're saying, you know, yes, we'll be able to do this. There's no assurance to anything. So especially at this time, you know, the way things are, I just, I just think that this is a needed position and that financially it's very feasible now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Danny.
Mr. Frost, I noticed in the ordinance, and I know you sent us something, that this would be the compensation plan for non-union employees, I think was a 22?
That's correct.
What is that? How much is that? Or what is the?
I'll be right back. Mike things over here.
Oh, look, it was magic. He walked right out of there.
I apologize. I left my book in the other room. But a pay grade 22 for a non-salaried employee bi-weekly is, it starts out at $2,357.38 bi-weekly. So take 2,000 times 26.
I'm sorry, Mr. Frost. Can you say that again, please?
Yep. It starts out at $2,357.38 bi-weekly.
Thank you.
That times 26 is, it's about $61,000 a year.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, I know I gave that information out before, so I just want to explain that just so it's not left at that amount or how, or explain how we came up with that. We have a company that we work with, Clement Nelson, that city council is aware of, but just for the public to be aware of. When we created this job position and job description, when I worked on this, I took the duties of what these positions did in other areas, other cities such as Toledo and some of the colleges that have diversity positions. And when Ken Frost and I sat down to work on this and Paul Grau was involved as well, I put what I would be looking for for the city and Clement and Nelson, basically, they are the ones who score the job. They have a process that they utilize. We don't set, we do set the pay scale because we're the administration and taking the council for you guys to vote on and pass it. But we're not the ones who comes up with the pay of what someone makes. There's a process, there's a formulated process. It's based off experience, education, what the risk factors are to the job. Ken, if you have that in front of you, I don't have that in front of me. But there's a, there's a, there's a very lengthy process on how a position is paid through the city. In fact, we're having other positions that are already in place reevaluated to make sure that they're being paid comparably to other communities and for what's required of them to do. We don't have all those back yet. Some may come back that people are making, being paid more than what they should be paid. And some may come back that people aren't being paid what they should be paid. But in my opinion, it's important to, to be fair and to be equal. And when you're evaluating a job description, you should do it the same way for every position.
Well, I didn't want to sound ignorant. I remember the figure before, but when I seen classification 22, so that is a newly created classification I'm getting now? Was already?
No. What, what happened, Danny, was, you're not wrong. So what happened was, the first ordinance, none, I don't, initially, initially, we weren't expecting it to get tabled. So what the plan was, was to have city council amend the ordinance because we actually, we had it in the wrong classification on the ordinance. And we were going to ask city council to amend the ordinance from, to the, to the, what it is now. But we never got to that point because it got tabled. So instead of bringing the old one back and amending that ordinance, as Mr. Melly explained, it was just easier to add a new agenda item with the correct ordinance.
Got you. And just let it be known too, and I, the mayor and I, we had a conversation about this right after the rally downtown. And I really believe that this is something that we're being proactive and it's going to happen.
That's correct, Mr. Addy. In fact, if you won't say it, I will. It was your idea at the time that we needed this position in the city.
Anybody else have a comment? Is there anybody on here that, from the public that would like to make a comment? No? Okay. Roll call.
Elder?
You're on mute. I saw that. Sorry. Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese? Reese?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Asked. Approved. Thank you all so much, city council. Okay. I'd like to do some committee reports. And I'm going to start with John Elder since we had the LRO meeting this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. We had our LRO meeting tonight, kind of an informational meeting for the DORA. It went very, very well. Thanks to Nikki Linder for putting out a survey that we had. About 385 people responded to. 307 indicated they liked the idea of a DORA. 78 did not. So we're going to be meeting again. And I would expect at the next council meeting to have some type of information, possibly in an ordinance about adopting a DORA. And one of the regulations of the DORA is, once we submit an application, there has to be a 30-day period to look at the DORA and review it. So that may, would probably constitute three readings at council meetings in looking at that. The big decision to make is the size of the DORA and then the hours of the DORA. I think that's what we have to discuss. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Christine Reese? You're on mute.
No report this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Danny Addy, Traffic and Utilities?
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Chris Leibold, Finance and Labor?
Nothing, Madam President.
Justin Smith, Parks and Recreation?
Madam President, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Angie Reese, Citizen Service Committee?
I'd just like to say that we, and this may sound redundant, but we have an excellent fire chief and we have an excellent police department chief. Chief Bliss was, gave a speech today or a talk presentation today at a meeting today that I attend to and talked about the, not problems, but how it works at the police station. And he was an excellent speaker. I wish I could tell you more about it, but I just want to comment him and compliment him on the excellent speech he gave today about who's afraid of the police. And the next one, Fire Chief Foose went with us Monday morning to tour the annex. And he pointed out some things, you know, about the dangers of it standing there and, and, you know, the things that, that we have to worry about. And he is the fire chief. He says, he's got his men to worry about sending them into buildings like that. It's quite a danger. So with the expertise that Chief Foose has and Chief Bliss has, the safety departments in our city are very well taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Boger, could I get you to speak on the events coming up for downtown?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me speak, President Hafford. This weekend, this Saturday, September 5th, we have a little bit of a change to our regular farmer's market schedule. This is what we're calling a sunset market. So as you all know, most markets are 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. This one starts at 4:00 p.m. and goes till 8:00 p.m. This happened back in 2019. We always have discussions with our vendors and farmers after the end of every season. And they brought this up as something they would like to do. So we were pleased to bring it forward. This year, lots of great reception from our vendors. We will be closing all the way from Krogan in Front to Ewing Street. And then the theme of the market, because we have a theme for everything, is block party. And the Garrison is the sponsor. And they are having a hog roast right in front of their business on Garrison Street. So that will be available for people to enjoy as well as long as all the farmers and the vendors and so forth. So that's a real fun change for 2020. Excited about that. And then coming the next week is our last auto show of the season, our last car show. And that's September 11th, which is a Friday. And that's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. So excited about that. That's the 15th year, not only for the markets, but for the car shows. So very excited about those things coming up. And then, of course, we go back to the 19th with another market. And that's the, it's a really fun, it's called Parkin Day, and it celebrates the Sandusky County Park District. And that's on September 19th at a regular schedule at 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. Does anybody have any questions for me?
My guest. Thank you so much.
No problem. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Christine.
I wanted to report that I went to two ribbon cutting ceremonies this week. One was the opening of the Compass Behavioral Health Offices. And they specialize in counseling for children, couples and single people. They're located on Krogan Street and I don't have the exact address. I'm going to say the 900 block of Krogan Street. But it's a much-needed office for our community. The second thing I went to ribbon cutting was the Paramount Cinema. They have revamped the theater and they're opening back up. And of course, they've got the seating taped off so that there's social distancing that's supposed to be. And they're going to start having new releases every Friday night. So I thought that was exciting. I want to also remind everybody that Sandusky County went back to a level orange, which puts schools in hybrid learning again. And so please, please, please wear your masks and be sure to do your social distancing. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Madam President?
Yes.
This is Holly Elder. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I would just like to thank council tonight for, I felt tonight was a really, really great meeting between the DORA and the diversity director position. I think that this was really an outstanding meeting that in all of these times that we have with Zoom meetings and everything else online and people are getting frustrated and feel like nothing's getting done. I think Fremont City Council tonight did two really great things. So I just want to say thank you to our city council people and our administrative team, the mayor, safety service director, economic development director, and our law director. All of, I think the city of Fremont really has been working together in a great way during this whole pandemic issue. And these times are trying and no one, most people don't see what happens behind the scenes and how frustrating things can be. And I think tonight was a good testament of, of a great community. So thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you for saying that, Holly. And I agree with everything that you said. Anybody else want to say anything?
Madam President, real quick, I put it in the chat box, but just in case people didn't see it, and I know Chairman Sleek is not here. As a reminder, next meeting, Thursday, September 17th, at 6:30, is an economic and government committee meeting where we'll be giving economic development update on past accomplishments so far in 2020, some things we've, we've been able to get done. And then we'll transition into some things we're hoping to get done, both in the next six months, the next couple of years. I think we have some big plans to announce that council needs to be aware of. So I'm looking forward to two weeks and sharing some of that with council.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Just a few things. First and foremost, just an update on Rossin Avenue. I believe they finished up the paving today. We still have a few weeks to go left on the project before we can open the roads up. I believe we still have to put in, there's some sewer work can, I believe that has to be done. Is that correct? Manholes?
Yeah, we still have to put the collars around the manhole covers and obviously do the striping. But as far as the paving goes, I'm going to give an inspection tomorrow morning with the engineer. And at that point, we will advise contractors, they can move on and discontinue the paving if it's done satisfactory. At that point, they'll be doing the manhole, the collars in the manhole, paving, or the painting rather. And then they will be starting on some water and sewer line work. But the actual road itself will be open until spring when they start redoing paving on the other side.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Also, I concur with the treasure with Holly Elder. I think, I just, I want to say thank you to city council as well. Definitely, definitely trying times across the country, across the state. And quite honestly, I felt like that was starting to happen here in our community. It's tough for all of us. It's, the jobs are stressful. We're all stressed out, you know, personally and professionally. At least I should say I am. There's just a lot going on. But I want to thank Dean Bliss, our police chief, who's not on tonight. Dean, if city council doesn't know this, he's on the mental health and recovery services board. So, you know, he obviously is well aware of what's going on there and what they're committed to do. And he was in support of this position. Don't know if he could vote there because of his affiliation with the city. However, I want to thank council, I want to thank all of you, Councilman Addy and Councilman Smith and Mr. Leibold and Elder. And I don't know who I'm leaving out here. Stephanie Martin, I want to thank you, Stevie. I know that you sent an email out last week. And, you know, I know that things through writing can, can be taken and can be perceived different ways. But most importantly, your voice and how you feel. And I'm happy that, you know, city council have heard what you said. And I think that, you know, hopefully we can, over time, eliminate those type of feelings for other people in our community. So there's just a lot of tough times. And Jamie Hafford, your leadership is, as I've told you on the phone the other day, I just, I want to tell you, I'm proud of what you've been doing as a city council president. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to share one thing. Um, as I was doing some research and trying to find a, a comparable community and whatnot, I didn't find a whole lot that was comparable, but I feel like Fremont is, um, gonna be able to set that tone for other communities that are similar to us. And they will be comparing, um, they will be looking at us and seeing how we're doing.
Uh-huh. We'll be the leader.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, John Elder makes a motion to adjourn and Chris Leibold seconds. Roll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Leibold?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
This meeting's adjourned.
Bye, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you, everybody.